I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Des, can I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sigata.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster. Commissioner Jacamo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Here. So all please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic of the city of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Couple of announcements. The next regular commission meeting is Tuesday, July 9th, 6:00 PM, right here. City will be closed on Thursday, July 4th in honor of our nation's 248th year of independence. And Mr. Mestes, we have an introduction of new employees. Yes, Judge Pansano, would you mind introducing the new employee?
Missus, I would like to introduce my court clerk, Sophia Peterson. She has been eight godsend. I was my own clerk for two months and she has really saved me because there are things that a clerk can hear that a judge cannot. And so I had to screen my phone calls for two months. I had to make sure that nobody spoke to me outside of the courtroom. I had to also try to be in two places at once, letting people into the court and still checking them in and doing my job. So please welcome Sophia Peterson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll move on to item five, committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Honeyfield. Commissioner Jacamo.
Raton Public Service Committee Board Directors' meeting on June 24th at 5:30 PM. Robin Osburn, RPS manager, is presented to and approved by the board of financial and statistical information. RPS general manager Dave Consign reported on the following items. Approval and transfer for city of Raton ordinance 42 section 19. Acceptance and approval of full attachment agreement annual full attachment court. Accepted and approved amendment to Raton Public Service Personnel Policy Section 8-1A and Section 8-2. There was accepted and approval of purchase of transfer for the old current school power upgrade. Discussing and acceptance of the approval of the transfer of the Raton Public Service Unit K6 2001 Ford F-250 to the city of Raton. Discussion and accepted approval to upgrade the lighting of the gym weight for softball field. There was no work meeting in the schedule this month.
What happened? Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay. On June 6th, I attended the New Mexico Municipal League Board of Directors' meeting in Santa Fe. The fiscal year 23 audit report was approved. The auditor's opinion was unmodified and we have a really good asset to liability ratio. There were some small procedural findings that require that staff policy align better with their current practices. The league budget for fiscal year 25 was approved. They're looking to continue to rebuild staff. They're having trouble with the cost of living in Santa Fe recruiting and they opened a small satellite office in Albuquerque and they've been strategizing with the budget. They found that rooms, meals and technology are just through the roof. And I think that's why a lot of our meetings are now on Thursdays and people come and spend the night on Wednesday because it's to me probably the least expensive night. The treasurer's report was positive with fiscal year 24 recurring revenues projected to exceed expenses by $208,000. They are amending the due structure with the Police Chiefs Association because their current meetings are exceeding their dues and I believe that will affect Raton. Our department should be in the 10 to 39 officer range. They kind of changed the ranges. So our dues will now be $500 a year. Municipal courts gave a presentation from their annual report, the struggle with the state to fund municipal courts and keep local control continues. There was a lengthy presentation regarding the self-insurers fund, strategic planning and budget. As we've discussed before, property liability is the biggest concern. However, rates are still okay and strategies are in place to keep rates as low as possible. We were very much encouraged to use the self-insured certification courses such as drug recognition training for law enforcement as well as mental health services because we pay for those and in our premiums and we should use them. I'm sure the mayor has lots to report there, but I was excited to hear some cool ideas for the future with including cybersecurity support, ordinance and policy review and virtual reality mobile training units. Some cool stuff. We discussed a small change in the bylaws that will be voted on at annual conference and I will be in Albuquerque this week at the policy and resolution committee meetings. On June 18th, I attended the Raton Water Board meeting. Lake Malloya is full. Filter plant production for May was 36.9 million gallons with a peak flow of 1.6 million per day. We approved the, oops, sorry. We approved the financial report and Geneva reported on the financial and billing software conference she attended and it includes that potentially other modules that could help with agendas, minutes and postings to the public. We approved a quote from Willow Stick for the Lake Malloya Dam geophysical seepage investigation that began the following day. Essentially, they're using electrical circuits, magnetic fields and micro seismic resonance to map the flow of seepage with, will include 3D modeling and in recommendations if needed, depending on what they find up at the dam. Alpha Southwest is continuing to adjust the programming for the Simron water system and get it to work exactly how we need it with our equipment. Engineering Analytics is working on estimates for the new sledge field. There was a short discussion regarding the need for pressure training citywide on procurement just for anyone, even the hospital and things like that. There was a discussion regarding the water storage tank rehab project and the funding for that. And our next meeting in July will be on the 15th at 5:00 instead of the 16th due to staff absence. I met on May 31st and June 24th regarding the National Park Service Rivers Trails and Conservation Assistance Program, which I think Mr. Mestes is going to discuss later, so I'm going to skip that over. And the Ports to Plains Board did not meet. Our next meeting will be in September at the annual conference. However, they had put out an invitation to watch, to attend Zoom regarding forts to ports, which I didn't get to attend in person in May, so I just finally caught up with it today. It talks about the interconnectedness of the interstate system with the military supply and movement. They have this thing called Strategic Highway Network, STRONET, and it subset the power protection platform. And that's basically the route for moving military equipment quickly from forts to ports. Essentially, what it means for Raton is our section, I think I've mentioned this before, they just finished a survey of our area and from Fort Carson down to Port Beaumont and Port Arthur in Texas, they would come right through Raton at that interchange with 8764, future I-27 and I-25. And that area has kind of a warning area because they need to do some more work figuring out what we'd have to do to the bridges to better use it and move things safer and quicker. The New Mexico, North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Board did not meet. Our next meeting is this week in Santa Fe.
All righty. Thank you. As for myself, attended the RPS meeting along with Mayor Pro Tim, the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Board meeting. Also have another board meeting coming up Thursday for that. Going to try and make some of the policy and resolution meetings Thursday and Friday. We'll see how my schedule works out, see what happens. And as Mayor Pro Tim touched on, some of the things going on with New Mexico Self Insurers Fund, we held a retreat in Tows, first part of May or the end of May. And some of the things that were interesting, as she said, there are several programs out there that we should be taking advantage of. One of them being instead of going out and hiring attorneys on a contract or something, they have general counsel available. And if it's a particular specialty, they will go find the attorney that fits the bill. And you know, we pay for it. That's part of our league dues. So that's something to keep in mind as we move on. We had some questions on underwriting some of our properties and we are looking at that, one being the Borough Canyon Line. We reviewed what they're going to look for in the legislature this year. Still trying to get some IFRSA reform going because right now, you know, as everybody knows, you can come in and ask for the world and it ties everybody up for months sometimes. Looking at some reform there to make it more specific to where they can't ask for every single little piece of paper. It's going to be specific to what they're looking for. So looking at that. We did also approve our audit on the fund side, came back unmodified, so that was good. And continuing to offer 75% reduction on costs for the workman's comp rates and 25% on liability discount. So funds doing well right now. And other than that, that is all I have. All right. Item six, items from citizens present. Anyone wishing to address the commission may do so at this time. However, it's an item that is on the agenda. We ask that you wait until that item comes up and we do not discuss matters of personnel in this part. So anyone wishing to address the commission may do so. If you're none, we're moving on. Item 7A, deliberate an act on approval of June 11th, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Should all happen in front of you. If there are no corrections or additions, they would stand approved as presented. No additions or corrections, minutes stand approved as presented. Item B, deliberate an act on adoption of ordinance number 1026, repeating the city of Raton code sections 34.07 through 34.09 of the code of the city of Raton being ordinance number 927 dated June 24, 2003 regarding municipal court fees and setting an effective date. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, as a reminder, in 2023, the New Mexico Legislature passed House Bill 139 entitled Eliminating Court Fees, which was signed into law by Governor Lujan Gresham. Under the provisions of this bill, the state has eliminated under New Mexico statutes unannotated 35-14-11 effective July 1st, 2024. And after that date, the Raton Municipal Court may no longer assess the $29 mandated fees per charge. Since all fees will now be sent to the state, sections 34.07 through 34.09 of the code of the city of Raton under ordinance 927 dated 24 June 2003 will be repealed in its entirety. On May 28th, we discussed this adoption of ordinance. The city court published the legal notice and we are now set to adopt so this is going to affect July 1st, 2024.
Comments, questions for Mr. Mestes? Chrissy, you have any comments?
So our court costs actually come out $38 because some of the fees that are included in that are not around an entire list, but mandatory in the state statute is $29. Traffic safety ads, which is private, they all got. The only ones that actually affect that ever came into the city, and Michael Lynn would know exactly where they go better than I do, is the $20 corrections fee, which was to incarcerate individuals from municipal court.
$29 in court?
No, that's the statutory. Yeah. But everything that's included comes out to $138.
Okay.
Gotcha. Yeah. So there were no amendments to what you got.
Comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1026 regarding city of Raton code section 34.07 through 34.09 of the code of the city of Raton being ordinance number 927 dated June 24, 2003 regarding municipal court fees and setting an effective date.
Motion and second to adopt ordinance number 1026. Any further discussion? Des, can I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sigata.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacamo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Item C, deliberate an act on lodgers tax advisory board recommendations. We have KRTN Enchanted Air Radio, Colfax County Fair Association and the Center for Community Innovation. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, the following recommendations were made by the Lodgers Tax Board on June 19th, 2024. The Lodgers Tax Advisory Board is recommending to the city commission that 8,313 and 15 cents be awarded to KRTN Enchanted Air Radio for radio ads promoting Raton events, organizations to the traveling public and regional residents outside Raton. This is coming out of the Radio Advertisement Fund. The advisory board is also recommending to the city commission that $8,579 be awarded to the Colfax County Fair Association for the Cowboy Summer Swing. The recommendation is for the Raton Convention Center lease, security, radio ads, lodging prints and the band, and this is coming out of the Contingency Fund. And finally, the Tax Advisory Board is recommending to the city commission that $2,500 be awarded to the Center for Community Innovation for Social Media Influencer at the International Santa Fe Trail Blue Moon Rally and the Fourth of July Celebration. And this is coming out of the Parks and Recreation Fund. You may vote for these collectively or anything.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
I thought it looked.
Who is the social?
Media influencer?
Yeah.
We were discussing that before. Her name is Jessica Hughes. Yeah. And it looks like we get to keep, there's deliverables with it for film and photographs and whatnot. I think that makes it more worthwhile. Otherwise, I'm not sure.
I remember reading it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Didn't realize she was a social influencer. Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve all three Lodgers Tax Advisory Board recommendations according to the minimum amounts.
Motion and second to approve all recommendations from the Lodgers Tax Board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate an act on run to Raton event form scope change. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, on March 23rd, 2024, the city commission approved the event form for the annual run to Raton rally on July 18th through 21st. They have come back with a change in scope for the event. They are requesting camping to be relocated from Al Portel Lot to the Raton Aquatic Center.
Comments, questions?
Motion to approve the run to Raton event form scope change to the alternative camping
Motion and second to approve the change. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, public hearing deliberate an act on resolution 2024-38 Infrastructure Improvement Plan, the ICIP fiscal year 26 through fiscal year 30. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, enclosed in your packets is the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan for the city of Raton covering FY 26 through 30. The local government infrastructure capital improvement plan is a planning tool which establishes priorities for anticipated infrastructure projects for counties, municipalities, tribal governments, special districts and senior citizen facilities. The local government ICIP is administered through the Department of Finance and Administration Local Government Division. The ICIP planning tool encourages entities to develop and update their five-year plan annually, which is submitted to the state. It provides an opportunity for communities to assist and assess any critical needs. In this version in front of you, Deputy City Manager and Public Works Director Jason Phillips has recommended the inclusion of solid waste equipment as the fifth priority ahead of the 1 megawatt photovoltaic improvements and behind the animal shelter replacement. The top three requests were Lake Malloya Dam safety improvements for 20 million, or I'm sorry, 30 million, storm drainage system improvements for 1.7 million, Raton Depot renovation for 2 million, and of course, the next is the animal shelter. And this brings the total to 40 items on the list.
Any comments, questions? This is again, public hearing. Anyone wanting to make any comments at this time may do so. The list is available online. Is it, does it say?
I believe so. The only question I had was, is he?
He is.
On the solid waste equipment, is it supposed to be all zeros?
Should be 200,000. There was a, there's a new.
Yeah, there's a form updated.
Okay. That was a question I had.
This is the new updated form. I'm sorry, I forgot to point that out.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2024-38 Infrastructure Improvement Plan, ICIP fiscal year 26 through fiscal year 30.
Motion and second to adopt resolution 20... 2024-38. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate an act on collective bargaining agreement between the city of Raton and the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, Council 18, AFL, CIO, Local 1601. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, as discussed at previous meetings, here is the contract with the recommended, updated recommended agreement that has been approved by the city and the union. The increase of pay are noted on page four, safety incentives on page five, holiday schedule that is in line with the rest of the city on page 12, and finally, updated terms of agreement on page 19. This contract, we believe, is fair and equitable vehicle that adjusts this cost of living and inflation for our employees.
How many employees in these departments are actually members of the union?
Right now, four with four potential signups.
Four out of how many?
Probably 12.
And last night in the RPS meeting, holidays came up. They were wanting to add, you know, personal day to match what we used to have.
Right.
And we were probably going to try and adopt Juneteenth and eliminate the personal day. So they are holding off on adding the personal days. We want to get everybody on the same page, same schedule.
Mr. Mayor, that discussion was had in our negotiations and my bargaining unit would prefer to have their personal day in lieu of Juneteenth.
We all, it's not listed on here.
Right.
Employees' birthdays are here.
That's the floating personal.
You're saying that they'd rather not adopt Juneteenth and keep the floating personal birthday?
If it was an either-or situation, they would prefer their personal.
Over Juneteenth, okay.
Probably not going to be an either-or. Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Raton and the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, Council 18, AFL, CIO, Local 1601.
Motion and second to approve the bargaining agreement between the city of Raton and Council 18 AFL, CIO, Local 1601. Any, excuse me, further discussion? Des, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mayor Sigata.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacamo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Item G, deliberate an act on an agreement to extend contract between the city of Raton and Arthur Regional Landfill, GGH Wagon Mound LLC. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in accordance with the contract dated July 1, 2021, both the city and Arthur Regional Landfill, GGH Wagon Mound Limited Liability Corporation mutually agree to a one calendar year extension of the contract for the above referenced project. This contract extension shall cover the term of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. In accordance with section 3.3 of the contract, the price per ton will increase by the CPI figure for walled water, sewer and trash. The CPI adjustment for the previous annual average is an increase of 4.8% over the 2023 adjusted price of $30 and 19 cents per ton. This will increase the tipping fees from the original bid price of $27.50 per ton to a new unit price of $31.64 per ton.
Any comments, questions? Rick or Jason, does this new price fall in line with what we're seeing other places?
It's a U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics calculation for a specific commodity that was outlined in the bid document. The last several years have been high. The CPI in years past was 1 and 2%. We've had a 5 and a 4.8, but that's kind of the nature of the beast. But it's outlined in this document, we can annualize this reference to the contract. It's kind of an is what it is scenario there, but it's actually smaller than a lot of over state inflation on other.
Just curious. Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement to extend the contract between the city of Raton and Arthur Regional Landfill, GGH Wagon Mound LLC.
Motion and second to extend the agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, deliberate an act on subrecipient agreement amendment number one between the Department of Finance and Administration and the city of Raton for the Raton Ball Complex renovation project. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, this amendment between the city and Department of Finance and Administration is for the Quality of Life Grant, extending the original date required to spend the $399,000 from June 30th, 2024 to June 30th, 2026.
So we've got the extension. But I know Jason worked his tail off to get it done in case we didn't get an extension. So where are we standing there, Jason, with all this?
We have probably in the neighborhood of $217,000 left to do. We had to pivot because our shipping container restrooms weren't delivered, so we remodeled restrooms ourselves at two of the complexes. So we're going to apply free up $75,000 of this crap to use on batting cages and things of that nature. We're still awaiting delivery of both our bleachers and our shipping container restroom, but we were able to pull off the tournament with what we had.
Any other questions?
I will make a motion to approve the subrecipient agreement number, amendment number one between the Department of Finance and Administration and the city of Raton for the Raton Ball Complex Renovation Project.
Motion and second to approve amendment number one. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate an act on contracts between the city of Raton and Invasive IT Solutions, provide managed IT services for city of Raton, Raton Waterworks and Raton Public Service, Raton Police Department, Raton Fire and ENS.
Mayor and Commission, in front of you, we have an updated chart for these expenses. This is a new contract. This is a new contract with Envision IT Solutions out of Inglewood, Colorado. The breakdown of this contract to provide IT services, backup licenses, and a total of nine services across the City of Raton is as follows. The City of Raton, $35,537. Raton Waterworks, $11,833.45. Raton Public Service, $14,974.52. Police, $51,684.12. Fire, $17,120.40. And this adds up to a total of $131,085.86. And this price represents an increase of $16,771.20 over last year. It's like between 8 and 9% increase.
Some of that was because we added some workstations?
Yeah, the city added a couple on the RPS, got some new computers. The largest increase was the police department. Most of that's associated with the new CAD system, so they did have to add three new servers.
Good.
And then a $5 per computer increase across the works.
Mayor, if I may, I believe the new VoIP system will save us roughly $1,000 a month, and so we're kind of looking for overall IT services, an increase of about $4,000 if you take away that, $12,000.
Okay.
This is really vital service, not something we can skimp on, especially in today's age. I will make a motion to approve the contracts between the City of Raton and Envision IT Solutions to provide managed IT services for the City of Raton, Raton Waterworks, and RPS, for the Raton Police Department, Raton Fire, and ENS.
Motion and second to approve the contract between the City of Raton and Envision IT. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate enact on vector control service agreement between Colfax County and the City of Raton.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is our agreement with the county to pay up to $3,000 a month for pesticides and their delivery. The city will notify the county of those areas that are not to be sprayed due to health or environmental reasons.
This is our annual agreement with the county. We do it every summer. I've got mosquitoes in my backyard already, so.
Me too. And everybody hopefully knows now they can call City Hall and if they have a sensitivity or bees or something like that and don't want their area sprayed.
Any questions, comments? Motion to approve vector control service agreement between the Colfax County and the City of Raton.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the vector control service agreement between the County and the City. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item K, deliberate enact on operating agreement with the City of Raton and Colfax County Seniors, Seniors Inc. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is an annual agreement between the City of Raton and the Colfax County Seniors for the Raton Senior Center. The scope of work states that the city shall provide cable television, electricity, gas, internet, sewer, liability insurance, water, maintenance and repairs, and snow removal. This agreement is for the next fiscal year, starting on July 1, 2024.
I will abstaining from this conversation. I can answer some questions.
I think, Sharon, I think some of those were off because we don't provide cable or gas.
No.
Or internet.
No.
Or insurance.
I'm sorry, I misread those.
Yeah, it's kind of a confusing.
So let me go back again. So we're going to provide electricity, sewer, water, maintenance and repairs, and snow removal. I'm sorry, that's the peril of cut and pasting.
I think the maintenance and repairs are kind of split, is just.
Pretty much, yes.
Does that typically happen?
Typically.
Otherwise, I think this agreement is standard that we've done this every year, so I will move to approve the operating agreement between the City of Raton and Colfax County Seniors, Inc.
Motion and second to adopt the agreement between the City of Raton and Colfax County Seniors, Inc. Let the record show that I am abstaining from the vote.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, deliberate enact on Resolution 2024-39, Annual Review and Approval of the City of Raton Lease Accounting Policy. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, I would like to call forward Raton City Chief of Staff and City Treasurer, Michael Ann Antinucci.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Most of you will recall, with exception of Commissioner Honeyfield, because he wasn't here this time last year, but in June of last year, we did adopt this policy, and it was a requirement of last year's audit. And so we did include in that policy that it would be subject to annual review and acceptance. So we're bringing the policy back to you. We're not making any changes, but GASB Statement 87 was the accounting rule that they established a couple of years ago. And so it does require that a leasing recognize a lease liability and an intangible right to use lease asset and a lease lessor to recognize a lease receivable and deferred inflow of resources. So, you know, the City of Raton, we have leases where we're the lessor and the leasing. Some of our agreements include equipment leases, such as copiers, scanners, mailing equipment. And that particular class of an asset is considered not material and is excluded from the GASB 87 accounting treatment. The City of Raton also leases land, hangar space, and those particular hangar spaces at the airport are under what's considered a cancelable lease, so those do not fall under the scope either. Some other examples of agreements that would be subject to the GASB 87 is the leasing of office space buildings or land. So I did attach with the resolution, the very last page is just one page of our audit from this past fiscal year. So you can kind of see how the auditors included this information in our audit report. And our threshold per our policy, we've established a $15,000 threshold, so a lot of our smaller leases wouldn't be included because of that. But you'll see, we do have the Colorado Division of Wildlife, that's represented under leasing activities, and then also the RPS building, they do pay us $1,400 a month to lease that space from the City of Raton. So then they prepare the schedule of the future principal and interest payments, and so you can see that scheduled out for the term of those leases. So every year, you know, we'll reevaluate any leases that we may have entered into that would be new and relevant to the FY '24 audit. So the auditors will use this policy to make sure that we're following it, and then we'll share with them any new lease agreements that we have for the new fiscal year. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-39, Annual Review and Approval of the City of Raton Lease Accounting Policy.
Motion and second to adopt Resolution 2024-39. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item M, deliberate enact on Resolution 2024-40, May Financial Report. Excuse me, Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commissioner, we bring to you this evening our financial report reconciled as of May 31st. You'll see in the general fund, our ending cash as of 5/31 was $4,523,188.61, less the required 1/12 reserve leaves $3,922,921.59 of available cash. As we've discussed in the past, we're in the process of collecting grant reimbursements that the city had done some temporary transfers throughout the fiscal year. Hopefully, we receive most of those by the end of the fiscal year, but potentially, I know we did monies for Quality of Life, the Kearney Film Project, those two for sure. If we do not collect those grant reimbursements, then I'll have to rebudget the payback to the general fund in the new fiscal year. So those will be some adjustments and things that we'll be working on. We really just have four days left in the fiscal year, so I would say it's pretty much over. We do have until July 15th to submit final grant reimbursements to the Department of Finance. So we'll be working this week on closing out the fiscal year and getting all of those grant reimbursements submitted in a timely manner. You will see that the gross receipts tax distribution that was received for the month of June, it actually reflects the April business activity. We will end the fiscal year 5.21% of our general fund budget projection. We also did submit the proposed interim budget by the June 1 deadline, and I did put a copy in your mailbox of the actual approved interim budget that we received this week. So we'll be working on closing out the fiscal year and actually calculating the true ending cash balances, and then we'll bring to you a final budget at the July 23 meeting, I believe it is. So that'll need to be submitted by July 31st. Other than that, we will meet with department heads prior to the final submission of the budget, and we'll make any changes and corrections as needed, and then I'll provide that information to you upon our recommendation to approve. So yes, July 23rd is when we'll bring that to you. You will see in your packet, I also did provide to you the lodgers tax comparison. We haven't quite plugged in all the numbers for the fiscal year, so you have figures up through May, but we are still down 8% in lodgers tax. Cannabis, we collected just slightly under $50,000 for the year. And then the gas tax, that one is still very concerning. We were down a little over 18% at the close of the fiscal year. So that one, we're going to continue to monitor. Like we've said, we use those funds to leverage towards the street projects for our match. Other than that, I did provide to you the unaudited financial statement. I did want to just mention under Fund 300, it is showing a negative amount. That's one that we are waiting on reimbursement from the FAA and state aviation. So I'm holding the checks for the contractor, but if those don't come in in the next day or so, I'll have to do a temporary transfer to cover those funds and then the general fund in the next fiscal year, once the funds are received. Other than that, we've made, I think, a lot of progress on just closing out as many grants as we could. We did close out the senior center grant, so hopefully you've all had a chance to go down there and see that project. And I'm not sure if they've applied for any additional capital outlay funding for the center, but.
They, I don't know if they did or not. I haven't reviewed capital outlay requests yet. That's on my desk today, so.
I'm sure there's always needs at the center, so hopefully if they get some additional funding, we can start some of those projects. The only thing that I do need to do on that project is, there is a percentage, 1% of the allocation for art in public places. So those funds do not expire because you have to go through the state art in public places. They have an official program for that, so we'll kind of start the process. I'm not sure what you can purchase for a little under $1,700, but their art is pretty expensive, so, but we'll have to purchase something for that building that qualifies.
I think the only thing I can think of off the top of my head to capital outlay is they were thinking of putting in a new cooling system because the existing cooling system is not real.
Okay.
So I'll check in.
Yeah, that would probably be a good allocation of that. Any questions on the May financial report?
No, it's for itself, but it says on the budget, and I saw we got the new insurance rates. How much did we go up?
10%.
Nice.
And then there.
It was, you hear 20, so I said nice.
And then there was a slight increase on the life insurance, and the city does pay 100% of that. So I think it went from $4.20 to $7.50 per employee.
Okay.
Was 10% what we had budgeted?
Yeah, so the only change I would have to make is for the life insurance, because I wasn't aware of that till recently.
Yeah, the lead was recommending 11%. That's what they budgeted, so.
No, I'm with you. I was kind of relieved with 10%, but you know, considering we had 10% January 1, and then another 10 July 1.
So yeah.
Yeah.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-40, May Financial Report.
One second.
Motion and second to adopt Resolution 2024-40. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item M, City Manager Report. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, bottom line upfront, our application for technical assistance from the National Park Service Rivers, Trails, and Conservation Assistance Program has been selected for the 2024-25 project cycle timeframe. The Mayor Protem, myself, and Ty's New Better City have already met with the National Park Service to begin this important initiative, and it looks like we're going to develop a very good framework for the city to improve our parks and trails. I also attended the New Mexico Municipal League City Managers Meeting in Santa Fe on the 13th and 14th of June. We discussed several topics on public safety and infrastructure. Around the big rocks, the treasurer is working the end of our year, fiscal year, and closing out the records, and she has been working a lot of hours, and I appreciate everything she's been doing. Police, three new officers are preparing to go to the academy next month. With the fire, our new ambulance should be here by the next meeting, and I invite you to come out and inspect it. Public Works has been extremely busy with the ball fields and softball tournaments, and by all accounts, it is a huge success. With engineering, our city engineer and head of dispatch have done a stellar job of upgrading our phone systems, and it appears that all the bugs have been worked out of the new VoIP system. With facilities, the Kearney Elementary renovation, the document equipment review was conducted today, and we're confident we will be able to start swinging hammers in late October, early November. The city clerk will be scheduling official photographs for all of our city officials, department heads, primary staff, and a few select citizens over the next few weeks, so you could be expecting a phone call to just help for your picture.
Smile.
Thank you, Marty. Economic development, Pleasure AI will be conducting training here at City Hall tomorrow afternoon. We will also be conducting a meeting with the Colfax County Manager, Trinidad City Manager, and Los Angeles County Manager on the DOT Driving Communities Grant. Again, that's going to be tomorrow afternoon. In mentions and dispatches, I would like to thank the city employees who worked overtime to get our fields and facilities ready for the influx of people and do all the little things behind the scenes to keep the facilities clean and functional despite the large crowds. In no particular order, they are Larry Marcus, Randy Trujillo, Adrian Mendez, Larry Berg, Fernando Ortega, Larry Berg Jr., Donald Garcia, Michael Martinez, Jimmy Holling, Gerardo Tafoya, Carson Trujillo, Wyatt Berry, Isaiah Garcia, Isaac Garcia, Clayton Kelly. Wyatt Berry, Isaiah Garcia, Isaac Garcia, Clayton Kelly, and Lance Martinez. And finally, some closing thoughts. As we get ready to celebrate our independence, I'd like to quote two presidents, a Republican and a Democrat, Republican President George H.W. Bush and Democrat President Barack Obama. I'm not going to reveal who said what, but there is a theme here. The first quote is, "I believe we are a nation of special individuals and not special interests. Individuals draw their enduring strength from their families, from their neighbors and communities, not from the government. And so I believe we must never ask government to do what families and neighbors and individuals can do better for themselves and for one another." The second quote is, "I've never believed that government can solve every problem, or should, and neither do you. We know that ultimately our strength is grounded in our people, individuals out there striving, working, making things happen. It depends on community, a rich and generous sense of community." So what is government supposed to do? At the employee all hands a few weeks ago, we discussed this with city employees. As a reminder, here in Raton, we are a statutory municipality with a commission manager form of government. This is the most common form of government in the United States. Getting back to what a city government do, I'd like to quote Randall Reed, County Manager of Atulut, a county in Florida. The public sector serves a threefold vital role as a provider of public goods, guardians of the commons, and promoters for civic life essential to our communities. Provide, protect, promote. I particularly like the way the county manager from Florida summarizes the purpose of the public sector. We provide goods and services and protect them, but we also promote the quality of civic life in the communities where we serve. That part is harder to define in terms of specific tasks, yet we recognize it when we do it right, resulting in our towns being better places to live, work, and play. Provide, protect, and promote. In going back to the previous quote, I like the simple explanation. We need to do this for our families, our neighbors, and our community.
Yeah, and I want to extend my thanks to the crew for the two tournaments going on because I've heard nothing but positive comments, and especially about the way the facilities looked and that, Jason.
I would share that. And we would echo the same thing about our local Little League Board. They were, you know, my guys were out there, they were parked, but we were on overtime. We had a bunch of volunteers that were tired of the streets throughout these tournaments. And as someone, we'd like to get a list of those and actually imagine more formally. But right now, they're hosting one more game this evening, so they're not here.
All right. Well, yeah, please let everyone know. I've heard nothing but good.
Great, thank you.
Great job. And I did notice, driving in the other night, the lights, much brighter than when I used to play Little League, much brighter, so that's an improvement. All right, Mr. Honeyfield, any other comments?
The only thing I'd like to ask the manager, where are we at with the properties that we had fun carrying on? Is there any word improvements or?
Yes, we're, those are moving forward. We had sent those, or those have gone to municipal court, I believe, or.
They're required to file with the district or.
I'm sorry. Yes, they're required to file with the district court. So we're waiting to hear back on these cases. And we're going to have another dangerous building, one come up, I believe, in the next meeting. So, yes, bureaucracy kind of moves slow.
I just want to thank our business community. I've noticed in town, I don't know, over the last six months or so, that customer service has really stepped up. And I'm sure that that was really appreciated during that ball tournament as well. So thank you to that, and wishing everyone a happy Independence Day.
All righty, and I echo those comments on Independence Day. I can't believe it's already next week. So looking forward to all the activities going around in town. Other than that, this meeting stands adjourned.